This time we'll call on Commissioner Oryx to lead us in the prayer and the pledge. Everyone stand please.
Thank you, Your Lord, for this good day. Bless your life, Your Father. Thank you for watching over us, our family and our children, Your Jesus. Thank you for another day, Your Father, as He gives us. Watch over us this week. Watch over our soldiers. Watch over our county employees, Lord. Bless each and every one of us, Lord. Let us be more patient, Father. We can understand things more, more reasonably. Thank you for the knowledge and understanding that You give us. But most of all, Lord, I thank You for finding salvation, Savior. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay, take the roll. Mark your present button and press your confirm button. Can we mark Wendell here?
Oh, thank you.
He's not here, is he?
He is here.
Hello, buddy. Thank you.
Wendell's here. Well, we'll just wait until he comes back, we can catch up.
I think Marie's right behind me. Here he comes.
Come on, Wendell.
Let me mark him here.
Okay, take the roll. We've got 14 members present. We have Colton Stout's family and some of his fellow workers in the audience with us tonight. And we have a resolution in recognition of Colton Stout's service to Campbell County. I'll read the resolution and I'll entertain a motion to approve it. Resolution 01, 02, 14, in recognition of Colton Stout, whereas Colton Stout served Campbell County Emergency Management System as a dedicated emergency management technician for, and whereas Colton had the kind of personality that enabled him to befriend all those he came in contact with and comfort to the patients he served, and whereas he took his job very seriously and maintained an unwavering dedication to his profession by never failing to come to work when called upon, and whereas Colton maintained compassion for all his patients by often following up with post-care visits, and whereas he loved to teach and educate others about his profession, and whereas Colton demonstrated the heart of a servant leader by giving to others before receiving anything for himself. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Campbell County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on this 18th day of February 2014, wish to show their appreciation for this young man and his service to the citizens of Campbell County during life-threatening situations. Now therefore be it further resolved that we recognize Colton Stout as an example of the true meaning of public service and thank him for serving our county and our citizens in such an honorable way, adopted this 18th day of February 2014. Yes, sir.
Make the motion we approve that resolution.
We've got a motion. Entire county commissioners second the motion. Any questions, any discussion? Ready to vote. All those in favor, vote aye, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. 14 yes, one absent. Marie Ayers is absent. If you folks want to come up, we'll present you with the resolution. If you have anything you would like to say, the rest is clear. This is Colton's mom and his brother, they love. We appreciate you all, appreciate your service to Campbell County. For Campbell County.
We certainly appreciate all you've done for them and the resolution that means a lot.
Your will. All his coworkers back there here that support you as well. Okay, at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 21st, 2014.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Oryx, seconded by Johnny Bruce. Any discussion, any question? All those in favor of approval of the minutes, vote aye, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. 14 yes, one no, Tom Hatmaker voting no, and Marie Ayers absent. The minutes are approved. Next we'll have the, entertain a motion to approve the notary renewals. They are R.L. Ayers, Doris J. Wilson, Loretta Cordell, April Cornett, Tracy L. Davis, Panchetta Faulkner, Quina Hatfield, Amy Durham, Robin Parrott, Carol S. Troutman, Deborah K. McNeely, David A. Winchester, Lily and Hannah Winchester, Amanda Borof, Fay Comer, and Ann Lee Thompson.
Make a motion to approve the notary renewals, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion by Oryx, seconded by Sue Nance, to approve the notary renewals. Any questions, any discussion? All those in favor of approval, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. 14 yes, Marie Ayers is absent. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Hackett's yes, Bailey yes, Mayor yes, Bruce yes, Davis yes, Evans yes, Hall yes, Hatmaker yes, Nance yes, Forks yes, Rutherford yes, Singley yes, Walden yes, and White yes.
Okay, the notary renewals are approved. Next we have the new notary applicants, and they are Stacy Austin-Ivy, Mary Glanita Snodgrass, Ruth Ann Ansel. Entertain a motion to approve the new notary applicants.
Make a motion to approve the new applicants, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Oryx, seconded by Johnny Bruce. Any discussion or any question? All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. 14 yes, Marie Ayers absent. The notary new applicants are approved. Call the vote.
Hackett's yes, Bailey yes, Mayor yes, Bruce yes, Davis yes, Evans yes, Hall yes, Hatmaker yes, Nance yes, Forks yes, Rutherford yes, Singley yes, Walden yes, and White yes.
Okay, moving on. Next I'll entertain a motion to approve the committee reports and minutes. There's one correction on the copy of the Budget and Finance Committee meeting minutes of February the 10th. Down in the second paragraph, in the second line, it should say 4th District instead of 3rd District.
Make a motion to further the minutes.
Got a motion by Oryx, seconded by David Adkins, to approve the committee reports and minutes. Any question, any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. 14 yes, Tom Hatmaker voting no, and Marie Ayers absent. The reports and minutes are approved. Next I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments. One exception, Budget Resolution 2-3, the Board of Education did not approve, so we don't need to approve that one. And 2-10, we need to approve the revised 2-10.
Make a motion to approve all budget amendments excluding 2-3 and also 2-10 as advised.
Okay, we've got a motion by Oryx, seconded by Singley, to approve our budget amendments 2-1 through 2-9, excluding 2-3, and approving also revised amendment 2-10.
Hold on, Mr. Chair. Can I ask a question, sir?
You can. Tom.
Mayor, do you know what happened to 2-3?
I just got the word that the school board did not approve it at their meeting last week.
Were they contacted about the playground equipment money?
I don't know. I just got an email that said that we did not need to approve 2-3 because the school board did not approve it at their regular meeting.
Last week we kind of all agreed that they should be contacted, whether, I don't know who's the office to contact, you or who. But were they contacted about the budget amendment?
I did.
Because it never was brought up at their meeting. So we just, if we asked for somebody to contact them in a meeting, would that not fall back on you as chairman?
Well, could be. Could be.
Did you just drop the ball on it?
I just dropped the ball on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, can I insert one thing, Chairman? The budget amendment that they failed to act on was 2-3. The budget amendment that relates to the playground equipment was 2-2. I think the budget amendment 2-3 was relative to personnel changes.
Yeah, that's one that Commissioner Walden was asking about.
Correct.
We ask questions and sometimes they just get kicked out to next week. And then I follow up with what should have been stated as 2-2.
Are you saying that we're voting on 2-10 also in this?
Revised 2-10.
Can we pull 2-10 and vote on it separate?
You can amend it.
Yeah, the motion is to...
Money for Dennis Potter to pay roads.
Motion is to approve it with these others.
Let me, can I make a statement? I'm not opposed on anybody getting roads paved. Everybody in the county, every district needs roads paved. And I'm all about the school down there at Carroll, getting their road paved, and this street over here. But here's what happens. Reading this thing, this doesn't guarantee that District 1 or 2 or anybody else is going to get any money. It's up to Mr. Potter's discretion where he spends that money. My thing is if, and no disrespect to Johnny or anybody, that if they're going to go out and do a resolution and get a bid, then we need to go pick us out someplace. And I know the city's happened, but we as commissioners in each district need opportunity to do that. Because we were elected number one for District 1, and then all of Campbell County. So, I mean, you know, I'm expressing my opinion.
Right, and the folks from the commissioners from the 4th District, they did just exactly what you have just said. They got together and...
So here's the situation.
Where they wanted to put their money.
If they're going to allow them to do that, no disrespect. And I'm glad they're going to take care of a Carroll school. I'm all about that. They need the road fixed. But should we not get that same opportunity too?
Let me say something. When it came up to begin with, that's what we were instructed to do, is get with your other commissioners in your district to determine what you want to do with that.
Correct.
So...
So...
And that was in the note being...
Probably.
Bobby White.
And two, Steve, this is in the city of Jacksboro.
Carroll.
And Jacksboro.
Carroll.
It's in the city.
Right.
And so the road superintendent has nothing to do with passing the city limits.
But we're spending $50,000 of county money there, sir. That's...
But I mean, but that was the reason it was a resolution.
And I'm not against it. I am all for them going down there fixing Carroll Road. I'm fixing for fixing them all. I just, and you know, whether I run or not, District 1 deserves some patchwork or something too.
Yeah, but we can't, we cannot specify on what. I mean, because Mr. Potter made it very clear that it didn't matter what we wanted, he was...
You can build lobby for your road.
I think he made it very clear that he wanted to sit down and meet with each one of us and decide where to put that white top.
That was not, that was not what I...
I've heard him say that.
Anyway, I mean, I was just trying to explain why that was a resolution by the city, because it was in the city. The same way that this street back here is in the city, is in the city of Jacksboro. The one behind the jail. What that has any bearing on it or not.
Right. Dusty.
I think, and I know, I understand the law, Dennis Potter is in charge of the county roads. He has to make the final decision. I understand that. But I think that he will sit down and talk with us individually. It's his call. I understood that from the start and go. I've been, a lot of talk and rumors going around, it's reelection money, blah, blah, blah. I know from the start that it was Dennis's last, he could have had the last say. But we was all, or I was, I normally speak for myself, was going off what he told us back in times past. Give me some extra money and we'll do what we can. And I think it was a blessing that we got the extra money. I don't want to back off from this, even have hard feelings because I can't get my roads I want done. Or Tom may disagree with me, but it's his ultimate decision, county roads. And I agree with that.
But it wasn't his ultimate decision to do that road or one down there. That wasn't his ultimate decision.
Yeah, please don't do it.
But we're paying $50,000 of county money.
There's taxpayers, county taxpayers in Carroll.
I understand, hey Sue, I promise you, I'm all about that.
Go.
It's a kind of joint thing, the city of Carroll paying for some of this too.
I know that. I know.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second to approve the budget amendments 2-1 through 2-9, plus the revised 2-10, excepting out 2-3. All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no.
We acknowledge a conflict of interest at this time, Your Honor.
Yes, sir. Bob Walden, Steve Rutherford, Alvin Evans, Johnny Bruce, Sue Nance, David Adkins, and Terry Singley, all acknowledge a conflict of interest but are voting their conscience. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Got 12 yes, 2 no, Tom Hatmaker and Bob Walden voting no, and Marie Ayers absent. The budget amendments are approved. Okay, next I'll entertain a motion to approve the reports, county officials, departments, and other reports that are in your package.
Make a motion to approve the reports, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Tom Hatmaker. Any question, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the reports, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Are we ready? All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. 14 yes, Marie Ayers absent. I'll entertain a motion to approve the reappointment of Donnie Poston, Bobby Heatherly, and John Wood to the Solid Waste Board.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Oryx, seconded by Johnny Bruce. Any questions, any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. 14 yes, Marie Ayers absent. Motion is approved. Next we have a resolution to request action from the state of Tennessee on regulating the sale of ephedrine or pseudoephedrine related to support of House Bill 1565 and Senate Bill 1791.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. Motion by Nance, seconded by Steve Rutherford, to approve resolutions in support of House Bill 1565 and Senate Bill 1791. Any discussion, any questions?
I've got it. Sorry about that, ma'am. I read that last week and I've kind of forgotten about what it says. Do you know if that creates a criminal act if someone just possesses a supafed type medicine without a prescription?
Joe.
I would assume that it does.
In other words, it'd be treated like a scheduled drug where if you don't have it in the proper container, you could be charged with some violation of a drug act. I would assume it would be like possession of any other prescription drug without a
Any other question?
No, just something to think about.
Okay, all those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. We've got 13 yes, Bob Walden abstains, and Marie Ayers is absent. At our last month's meeting, we declared a piece of property, a little more than half an acre, surplus property to the county over around the old Carrborundum site. And tonight we needed to establish a minimum and how we're going to sell it, whether it's going to be by seal bid or public auction. Yes, sir.
Well, actually we were talking, I think we said like $9,000 per acre.
From nine, nine to $15,000.
15, I believe, in Carroll. Could we not set it at $10,000 an acre?
That's your motion to set it at 10, minimum of $10,000 per acre. And how do you want to sell it, at public auction or seal bid?
I'd say public auction. Live auction.
I'll second with that.
Much better.
Public auction. Okay. Set the minimum at $10,000 to be sold at public auction.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
That is .53. Am I right, Joe, it's not a full acre?
Well, I want to point out to you here, that on the survey that they've done, there are two tracks. And you don't have bearings and distances on some of the lines here. So we don't know just exactly what the acreage is, but he has, I mean, he's gone, on the top one is .0.36, and on the bottom one is 0.15. But you don't have, you don't have the exterior lines that have bearings and distances. I assume that's what he has calculated.
I just want to point this out. Wasn't too long ago Joe was telling us about a horror story up the valley. Guy built a house or bought a house, thought he owned the property, come find out he don't, even owned the house. This is not our survey. If we're going to do this, we need to have this survey.
How much is that?
I don't have a clue.
I would say that in the course of the plan is that, that the bearings and distances were in fact determined and they're just not shown. But I don't know. Mr. Graham is here, he might be able to answer that question.
Steve.
I'd like to point out, I own that track of ground. If you sell the front track off, you're landlocked me. So you're going to have to have the survey and give me a 50-foot entrance into my property if you sell it off. Because you're landlocked me. That's you're taking all the road lanes to sell it.
Is there not a, Mayor?
Yes.
Is there not another entrance from the back?
Yeah, railroad.
Is it?
Yeah. The road lanes is only entrance in there. When I bought it, I thought it was an easement. And when we checked, we found it, it was deeded to the county in 1970, free of charge on Carrborundum. It never was used, forty-some years. I bought both tracks of grounds. After I bought it, we found it was an easement there. And the more we researched it, we found out it was deeded to the county. Now, if the county wants to sell it, I understand that there, but they're going to have to have the survey to give me a 50-foot entrance. It cannot landlock me out.
Joe, any comment about, the last comment?
Well, I think what he's referring to is that the planning commission has a requirement that roads be 50 feet wide. Of course, they can waive that requirement, but that is a requirement. There's not a statute which allows the county to give properties to any person. So there are statutes that provide... are statutes that provide a procedure through which a landlocked parcel can get access to a public ground. And, you know, if this property were to be sold to some other person, then certainly Mr. Graham would have that option available to file an action to acquire that access to a public ground. Does that answer your question?
So, what we're, we're okay, I mean, we're okay with what we are doing tonight.
You're asking that you have the authority to set a minimum price.
And determine a way to.
Determine which, what way you want to sell the property. I don't know of any reason why you don't.
Bob Walden?
We'll have to have a survey before we sell it. Would that be the wisest thing to do, Joe?
Well, what we're seeing here, there's probably some bearings and distances on it. It's just lines that are colored. If you were to say tomorrow, we want to make a deed to this property, you don't have a description of these exterior lines that would close it. You have some calls here that are along the front, but you don't have any that are on the sides. You've got, you've got a line table here that shows some lines, but we don't have enough information that's, that actually.
Joe?
This is a lot. Now, again, I would assume that when he, when Mr. Crouchfield did this man, that he has this information, but it's just not shown on.
We may not have to have a survey.
Would Jake, the owner here, who's just had that information, go in?
Well, I think what we should do initially is to make sure that the 50-foot piece is there for Mr. Graham to get to his property before we, we solve, make, I mean, make life easier for whoever buys it, and keep him from having to go through the process of probably, I guess, requiring him to go through some legal process to acquire that 50 feet from the new buyer, the new owner. Does that make sense?
If somebody, if somebody has to give up a right of way, there's not going to be anything left, really.
Alvin?
I'd like to make the motion to table this to the next meeting, we can find out what about this.
To find out if we've got all the information that we need in order to proceed with this. Okay. Yes.
Can we put it over to the buildings and grounds, somebody, some commissioners go out and make a decision on this? I agree with you, Al. I think somebody needs to be in charge of making a decision. I went out and looked at it, and nothing against you, Mr. Graham, I looked at it, and I said.
Did you say it that?
No.
The motion to table?
Yeah.
Well, we, that's okay, that's okay. We can table it, and we'll approve the tabling motion, then I can, then I can refer it to building grounds.
That'll work.
Okay.
Can I finish?
You can.
Nothing against you at all, or anybody who owns the property, I think we did make sure it's right. And I don't, honestly, I don't, I wouldn't look at it and say.
Well, we point a price, and they need to check Carroll. Carroll sold every minute of $2,000 an acre.
Yeah, well, I mean, I know by law, Joe's advised us by law, we have, we can't just give and sell to somebody. We have to do either a seal bid or a public auction.
As long as they start making, giving entrance, I don't care.
And I think we need to do, I agree with Al, but I think we need to have some people involved, the commissioner, all of us, I guess, need to be involved. Know more about it.
I don't think you need to know and landlock somebody.
I agree.
Mr. Graham saying we need to check with Carroll, that is Carroll and Destro Park, that's why they give for an acre, $10,000.
Okay, we've got a, we've got a motion to table this to our next meeting. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the tabling motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Vote.
Does that change Johnny's motion?
If it's, if the tabling motion is approved, then it's just, his motion's null and void. All those in favor of the tabling motion, vote yes, then press your confirm button, those opposed, vote no. And Tom Hatmaker? Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. We've got 13 yes, one no, Steve Ruthford voting no, and Marie Ayers absent, the tabling motion prevails. Okay, we'll, I will send this matter to the Building and Grounds Committee to report back to the commission at the next workshop.
All right, so, we're good.
Okay.
Are you going to have it resurbed or checked with Crouchfield on those lines?
I will check in the register of deeds office to see if there's calls and so forth for this piece of property, and I'll check with, is Dwight the one that, is Dwight the one that did this?
Yeah, I made Dwight's survey.
I'll check with Dwight, find out for him, the particulars.
Let me be clear what I was saying about that, because I don't want to be the misunderstanding about him. He has provided this man, which has this shady area, which Steve had presented you. It does not have bearings and distances on the, on some of the exterior lines. I think that probably he has those bags of distances, they're just not shown on him. So, my guess is that if you, if you contact him, he will be able to provide that information. If he doesn't have it, he will probably be able to do it very quickly, I would think.
Okay.
One more thing, ma'am, and I'll shut up. Can you make sure about utilities that's in there too?
What do you want?
Might be something buried, that's buried way over bar, you know, can't sell out the right of way on utilities.
Okay. What will be there, water?
I don't know, I mean, anything.
Natural gas?
That gas, that water, that hydro.
What's the number, what's the number you call, 811?
I think you need to go through the whole scenario.
I'll do it, 811, I'll do it. Okay. So, none of the commissioners had anything on the agenda? We need to, with our EMS minutes that we approved, there's action that needs to be taken to approve the transition from North Regional Emergency Management Service to Campbell County Emergency Management Service for the Jellico area.
Motion.
Second. And in that, you want to be sure that they, Jellico retains the accounts receivable, and that this, and that this transition take place by April 1.
And we would like to schedule an EMS meeting for the workshop on the 20th, just to.
Make sure everything is.
Make sure, you know, keep the cost out about it, and if there's nothing that comes up there at the last meeting.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Would you care to repeat all that one more time?
And it's on the accounts receivable, Dave.
They have, the accounts receivable that they've already billed, that they have now, will, they will keep those. Anything moving forward after April 1 will be Campbell County's. Rusty.
Is that the last check that Campbell County's, she's here too, or we?
March will be the final.
I can't hear you, Danny.
March will be the final monthly payment to North Regional.
March will be the.
How much was that, Danny? I know it's a whole lot.
The monthly payment is $250, $6,050, I think. It's the $75,000 divided by 12.
And March is the last payment?
March would be the last payment if Campbell County's taken over.
Still have April, May, and June, but that would be retained by the county.
Okay.
Right, yes, yeah.
And everything, I know you sent an email out, Danny, everything that's in that email has been talked through and worked out.
It's enhanced.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I want to put the monkey on Danny's back, because this come out, this has support from the EMS committee and support from the commission. You're sure that your department can handle this?
Yes.
So, if there's any failure, it's on you, not us.
That's the avenue we have to take every day, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does everybody understand the motion?
You never did repeat it.
Okay. The motion is to transition from North Regional Emergency Management Service to Campbell County Emergency Management Service by April 1. By April 1. Okay, is that, is this motion generic, just to make that transition, it doesn't bind us into any additional agreements, as leases or rents, or? Correct. Is it a generic motion in those terms?
What I understand is that we're going to take this, the minutes from this committee, and incorporate those into an agreement that will provide for the transition, as to what equipment supplies are going to be transferred, the cutoff date would be April 1, how these employees would be.
Okay.
There's more to it than just what you're going to hear, and we will try to get that together for the next meeting.
Okay, so this is a generic motion that's. This says this is what we're going to do, and we're going to put it, we're going to put it in motion. And I just wanted to be clear.
And maybe that's why I'd like to, you know, EMS committee to meet somewhere near the workshop.
Okay, yeah.
And make sure that there's not been anything left out on either side.
Yep. Anything else you want to add, Joe?
It would be a resolution under the plan, is what you're doing here tonight, and the details we will send to you or you to review, and then you can tweak it, and the changes you need to make is completely before it's approved.
Okay, thank you. Okay, everybody understand the motion now. All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button, those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. 14 yes, Marie Ayers absent. Motion is approved. Okay, does anybody have anything else? No. No. Yeah? Somebody say. I've got one thing that I need to read. Oh. Bobby L. White, 660 Dogus Chapel Road, LeFollette, Tennessee, February 18, 2014. To the citizens of Campbell County, I have been humbled to have been given the privilege to serve the citizens of Campbell County as their commissioner for 16 years. It is with deep appreciation for that privilege that I announce that this is my final term as county commissioner, and that I will not be running for reelection in August. My goal has always been to be a voice for the citizens of Campbell County, but the time has come for me to concentrate on other interests in my life. Sincerely, Bobby L. White.
I'd like to schedule that EMS meeting before we turn, we'll put it on the 20th, which is the night of the full meeting, and still bring the information before the commission.
Did you get that, Peggy?
It's a women, but it's not the regular meeting.
Yes, it's on the 20th, and that one is due at 5:00. EMS meeting at 5:00.
EMS meeting at 5:00 on the 20th of March.
So, Danny, on the 20th, make sure that you get reported to yourself, and you know, can you provide us with all the answers to, you know, sure satisfied that all the equipment, everything's good and well? For what reason?
When I have Monday 17.
17?
Yeah, so 20th is on the Thursday.
March 17th at 5:00, EMS committee meeting. I got something to say. Hang on just a second. To finalize the transition from North Regional to Campbell County EMS. No, the commission meeting is on the 17th, and we're going to have the EMS committee meeting at 5:00 on the 17th. Everybody got that? David Adkins?
Okay. Bobby, I've only been down here for three and a half years, but it's been a pleasure to serve with you. And I know your time's not up tonight, but you, you serve the people of the 2nd District of Campbell County well, and it's been an honor for me to be here at this limited time with you. And I'm out of Campbell County and the 2nd District's losing a good commissioner and a wealth of wisdom, but we respect your decision, I do.
Mr. Eric?
Me and you don't always agree, Bob.
We've had two votes.
We have, we, but you've showed me the other side, that look at the other side, and I appreciate that. A lot of things that I took for granted myself and didn't listen, but I appreciate that. I've learned to listen somewhat, and I appreciate you for that. I wish that you would reconsider.
I, this is something that I've, I have pondered a long time. Appreciate it.
Okay, Tom?
We're going to have a hard time replacing you on the insurance committee.
Exactly.
I'm not on that committee, but I know you do a fantastic job on that committee.
He's, he's kept the county's insurance. When I wanted, and I know we're running long, but when I wanted to look at a different insurance company, and Bobby said, Rust, you need to think about this. And then the company I worked for went with a different insurance company, and I found out the hard way. And Bobby was right, and he's been right about a few things, and I've been wrong.
I have not been right in my marriage.
You didn't, you didn't want to bring that up, Bobby. And that's nothing to do with the county commission.
One more thing, guys, I handed out to you a copy of the change order on the jail, that $140,000 we stuck the taxpayers with to increase the size of these rooms, you'll see there's more there than just increasing your rooms. So, we're told one thing, there's always something else going on, and we don't pay attention to this stuff, because we don't ever ask for this right here. I got a detailed description, we don't, we never, we're never provided with these till sometime later on down the road after it's done being voted on and passed. There's, there's more there than that $280,000, our $140,000 our part, and we just need to start looking at this stuff closer. The taxpayers got stuck with this bill, and it should have been the architect's fault. This should have been all on him, not us or the taxpayers.
Okay, ready to entertain a motion? Motion by Alvin.